Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Welcome. This is the Town of Red Hook Town Board meeting of Monday, October 30th, 2023. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Folks, we're going to, we have our public hearing on the budget. I think we'll pass on the announcements until we hold that public hearing, since we did schedule it for seven o'clock. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing announcements, please?
Notice the public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook at Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, on October 30th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. local time to hear all interested persons on a preliminary budget for the 2024 calendar year for the Town of Red Hook. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard at said hearing. The public is encouraged to submit written comments by email to townclerk@redhookny.gov or by mail to the Town Clerk or by dropping off a copy in the Town Dropped Box at 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York for receipt in advance of the hearing by 4:00 p.m. the day of the hearing. Please note preliminary budget 2024. All comments received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. Please take further notice that copies of said preliminary budget are available for inspection by any interested party during the Town Clerk's office hours by appointment only, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, on the town's website, www redhookny.gov. The compensation to be paid to the following officers is as follows. Supervisor: $60,220. Town Board members each: $9,702. Town Clerk: $62,379. Town justices each: $19,952. Highway superintendent: $73,259. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated October 18th, 2023, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you, Deanna. We have with us tonight Ann Conway, our terrific bookkeeper. We're going to go through very quickly some slides just to hit the highlights of the budget. It does say up there tentative, but the slide presentation, uh-oh.
That's all right.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Is still accurate for the preliminary, which is the subject of the public hearing tonight. The 24 tentative budget continues with what's been eight years of having, investing in projects without raising taxes. We've lowered the tax rate by 13%. Many of you recall there was a residential trend up 13%. New York State mandates that in order to maintain a 100% equalization rate. So the household impact is unchanged from 2023. We lost our power again. There we go. I think you'll need to touch it occasionally to keep it on. Fund balances and credit rating remain strong. Our fund balances are quite high still. 2016, those are the ratings. They were reaffirmed again in 2019. Projects continue. You've been hearing and hopefully reading about Cooking Ham properties and the trails, the Parkland improvements and expansion that continue. Next slide, please. We don't do this by ourselves. We do it by leveraging funds with both governmental entities and not-for-profits. These are just a sampling of some of the grants that we have received for the various projects. We have reorganized town government here for greater efficiency. We, one of the first things during my first term was we refinanced our debt. For those of you who have been watching what's happening with interest rates, I can tell you that we were very fortunate to have taken that step. The existing debt that the town had is financed at 2.1%. Lower utility costs with the community solar. We have been able to provide not only lower utility costs for our municipal buildings, but also for residents as well. You may recall, we purchased the streetlights from Central Hudson, and we are saving a great deal of money over that. And as soon as we pay off the purchase, which will be in the next year and a half, you'll start to see dramatically lower costs associated with maintaining that streetlight program. So this is what's called the fiscal risk analysis. The Comptroller issues a report for every municipality. And the Town of Red Hook has a near-perfect score with fiscal risk. It basically says that we have no risk associated with having any financial stress on our books. The one little ding that we had was in 2020. As you all probably recall, when the pandemic started, the economy shut down. Well, governments are not immune from that. So we derive revenue not only from your property taxes, but also from fees that we generate by the building department, also other types of taxes, mortgage taxes, sales taxes. They all but evaporated when the pandemic started. And so you probably recall, we had difficult decisions. We had to reduce hours here in Town Hall and staffing. Even with those reductions, we were not able to meet our expenses for 2020. So we got a minor ding. I think we ran about $30,000 shortfall for fiscal year 2020. You probably read in the news about PPP funding and loans for businesses. Well, municipalities didn't get any of that additional funding. Later, we would get ARPA funds that would be designated for certain types of activities. Next slide, please. Okay, and here again, these are the various categories. And we've got a perfect score, as I said, in all of the categories, with the exception of that one year 2020 where we fell short just a tiny bit. Next slide, please. Investments, I'll try to go quickly through these. Some of these projects you may be familiar with. If you're new to the community, we'll just quickly summarize them for you. 2017, Route 9 sidewalk and crosswalks. There was not a sidewalk on the east side here of Route 9. And hopefully, you've been enjoying those sidewalks and walking to Holy Cow and then working off the calories. New Town Hall parking. So we've done a lot here in the campus. We redid the parking lot, more ADA accessibility. We've got LEDs for the lighting system. We've got a brand-new septic system that we had to do on an emergency basis. I made it a little too fast.
Sorry.
We've retrofit, I don't know if that's on a separate slide. We've retrofit Town Hall. So we've got air-source heat pumps. We've got insulation. We've made the bathrooms ADA accessible. We have wheelchair accessibility in the front here in Town Hall. Next slide. Thank you. We purchased land to expand the park on Rec. Park West. And obviously, we've begun the build out there. And I think we have more slides on Rec. Park West, right?
This is the retrofit.
So that's the retrofit. Thank you very much. And new generator, it says ordered. Actually, the new generator is in place. We applied for grants and received it for a new generator here and also at the community center. Next up. Highway garage. We have a PV system now on top of the highway garage, LED lighting. That statistic is a little old. We now have both purchased and authorized over $1.4 million in new equipment for the highway department. Next slide, please. Thank you. Double-digit wage increases for staff. So we've, I think, on the highway department, somewhere in the neighborhood, 20% increases in the last couple of years. Again, new equipment, a little bit updated, $1.4 million. Next slide, please. Thank you. Community center. Most folks don't realize, but the Town of Red Hook actually funds a lot of the programming that happens at the community center. Very critical for folks of all ages. We look at recreation as not just hitting a baseball or, you know, throwing a ball into a hole. We look at recreation of all ages and make sure that our community is stimulating for folks of all ages. New generator for, so the community center is also our warming and cooling center now. So we needed to make sure, and also has an office of the aging center there as well. We need to make sure that it was reliable in terms of having electricity. So we've got that generator in place. We also just recently purchased an AED for them. Believe it or not, the community center had no AED. Next up. We've expanded a lot of the services at the recycling center. First of all, free access for residents. We don't charge. We used to charge people for public access. Food waste compost, a new program. I was just there the other day. They're doing gangbusters business there. It's more than double the amount of food waste that they're collecting there at the recycling center. And we're doing something, I think, that is really unique to Red Hook, which is we're recycling refrigerants. So if you bring your air conditioner, you may not be aware of this, but there are very harmful liquids that are a part of it, gases that if allowed to escape, if they are recycled improperly, will cause significant damage to the ozone. So we capture that, bottle it, and take it away for recycling or reuse. Next up. Red Hook Public Library. You may know that over the years, we have, because the inside was not in really habitable condition, we have been using the exterior for an expansion of the Red Hook Public Library programs, and in particular for children. And we are endeavoring and continue to try to make repairs to St. Margaret's. Next up. Recreation facilities. Obviously, if you've been to the Rec. Park, you've seen all the work that we've done. One of the things that we're very proud of when we talk about equity in this community is that we offer free summer Rec. programs. Continue to do so. New playgrounds for preschool and school age. Volunteers are so critical, and volunteers were so critical in this particular case. We had a whole playground committee came together and helped design essentially what are really two separate playgrounds in the same space for different age groups. And if you were involved, and many of you I know were involved, Jacob, you helped me lift the heavy stuff. It was a wonderful, wonderful community build. So an important investment there. We did receive some grant funds for this multipurpose field, turf field, professional lighting we're using for lots of kids and lots of folks who still are kids at heart. Thinking in terms of the over-40 softball league. A new batting cage that was new to the facility as well. We rebuilt the other baseball field. New basketball courts. The basketball court was a total rebuild. It was not just a resurfacing. We've got new state-of-the-art LED lighting and fencing there as well. New tennis court, same thing. We had to do a lot of subsurface work there that was improper drainage. We rebuilt the tennis courts, new fencing, new LEDs. The latest craze is pickleball. And so we, through John Kuhn, who happens to be in the audience I see tonight, came up with a wonderful idea, which is to repurpose what was the roller rink at Rec. Park for pickleball, since it wasn't getting any use, and there was tremendous demand for pickleball. Next up. We are trying to make our entire community, or as much of it as we can, ADA accessible. We've made the restrooms, the walkways, snack bar, kitchen, all of the above accessible. New parking lot, the north, with LEDs, and rebuilt dugouts with new roofs. New maintenance garage, refurbished bleachers, new pathways. Recreation facilities. So we've got a new camera security system. Unfortunately, we've had to refer to that camera security system. We continue to have vandalism at Rec. Park, and it was an important investment and it paid off. Wi-Fi, one of the great relationships we have is a collaboration with the Public Library. And so we were able to institute free Wi-Fi at Rec. Park, so you can do your work there and enjoy watching the kids. Rec. Park West build out. So we've had this investment since 2007. We bought the property, but had done little, if anything, to it, except maintain it and mow it. Well, we endeavor to finally try to implement the plan for the property. We've got a new softball field, new dugouts. Trailhead parking. This is where you access the Soft Hill Trails. So we've got the trailhead, benches, kiosks, and the trails are there. If you received a letter from our office, you know we're very close to realizing the village-to-village access off-road by walking or by biking. Next. The connection, we're actually in the middle of that project. It's happening right now, this week, the Rec. Park connection. There'll be a crosswalk instituted on Linden Avenue from the east to the west. There's going to be a separation from the roadway and the cars on Fruit Blood and a multimodal path for, again, walkers and somebody on a bike from the north parking lot on Rec. Park East to Linden Avenue and then across. Cooking Ham. Hopefully, you all received the mailing here. We wanted to inform you as to more specifics on what's happening with the Cooking Ham properties. And you see the proposed trail system. We expect next year, when the farm roads are improved, that it will open up. On the west side, the trails are only west of Ralph and Mel. And Dog Park. So benches, some amenities, and hopefully a plan for a better combined Rhinebeck and Red Hook Dog Park next year. Resiliency. So back sort of early on, and I think in my first term, we had two very extensive flood risk analyses, one of which involved folks from NASA. And great projections with climate change. We also had some significant data of red julia relative to flood risk throughout our community and some suggestions of what we could do to help mitigate that. We've had a drainage study implemented for Forest Park, where historically, the drainage has been very poor. And we hope to hear about some grant funding to address those issues. Two bridge replacement projects, one of which is complete. That's Stony Brook, one of which is underway in the design phase at this point. And that's Aspen. Easements on lands with water resources. We continue to protect lands in and around the Soft Hill, in particular, to protect that DEC-regulated body of water, which also serves as the drinking water for Bard College. We are just about finished updating our local water truck revitalization plan, awaiting final comments from Department of State. Clean energy. I'm sure you know, in 2019, we came through with a promise to fulfill one of the major actions in the town's adopted Climate Action Plan of 2012, which was to build a 2-megawatt community solar farm. Upwards of 280 families now belong, and many of them are with current energy prices, expending half of what the current market rate is for electricity. We now have a total of 12 charging portals here at Town Hall and a pair in Village Parking Lot. And community choice aggregation programs, where people can choose if they'd like to participate in clean energy supply. Next slide. Thank you. Red Church Cemetery. So there are things that you willingly do, and there are things that you're forced to do. New York State law says that if a cemetery association decides to abandon it, it is up to the township to take it over and maintain it. And what a splendid job John Kuhn and his staff have done in maintaining the cemetery. We've made improvements to the sheds, electric. We also grazed a lot of the gravestones that had sunk into the ground. And so the place is looking terrific. For Tivoli, nearby Tivoli, we became involved in the sale of St. Silvio's, and we were able to facilitate an additional parking lot for Tivoli for free. Next up, open space. We continue to protect more farmland. That's a picture of the Potts Stickle Farm, just north of the intersection of Tivoli. People recognize it for what's written on the barn there. We have other farmland preservation projects, obviously Cooking Ham, and so on and so forth. Communications, one of the things that we continue to encourage folks, because no matter how much we try, we hear from individuals that say, "I didn't know about this," or "I didn't know about that." If you sign up for notifications, you will know about everything, because it gets sent to your email, it gets sent to your phone, whatever you choose, whatever topics you choose. And as soon as anyone else knows it, you know it as well. So we are now upgrading our website to have greater ADA accessibility. And when do we expect that, Ann?
Kay's working on it now, so it's begun.
It's beginning.
We're working on broken links first.
Okay.
So probably three months, I'd say, to get through it.
Thank you. Next. Safety, increased policing. We believe in community policing for many reasons. We are, we have funded important fire company equipment. You see the new ambulance for Red Fire. And we are going to be assisting with the expansion of the Tivoli Firehouse. Next slide. I think that's there. We have amended our Chapter 131 for truck laws to provide for safer routes and protection of the roadways. Next slide. Veterans increase funding for the VFW. Uh?
I'm getting it.
Uh? So that's the change in the tax grades over time. 2016, it says percent. Really shouldn't be percent, it's a mil rate. So if you want to know quickly what you're paying in town taxes, you look at your net assessment, and you would multiply it by that mil rate. So 1.58 in 2024 for those in this preliminary budget. That means $1.58 for every thousand that you're assessed. The average house in Red Hook. I think we're going to get to that, Ann. Do you have a slide for that? Oh, I don't know if we do. That looks like a former slide. It wants to flip.
It does. Okay.
Those are the lists of the projects. Next slide.
More projects.
More projects. Next slide.
Supervisor's budget.
Supervisor's budget.
And the, um, tax rate.
Okay, tax rate. There we go again for tax rate. Is it possible to blow that up, Ann?
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to see. There we go. It'll look a little bit better. Yeah, so the mil rate again for the various entities. You can see the town maintains a small portion of the average property tax bill. It's only 7% of the average property tax bill. The school, on the other hand, is, what does that percent say?
78.
78%. And you see the county at a greater amount. 12%. And librarian fire. Just to give you some sense of what your town taxes are as an overall percent of the bill.
That's the end. Page 44 of 40.
I think we, let's just quickly show the preliminary budget on the screen, and then we'll open the public hearing. Very good at this time. I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Are you making second?
Second.
Okay.
Go on, favor. Aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, just a reminder. We ask if you would be kind enough to come and state your name and keep your comments to three minutes in time. We would appreciate that. Who would like to go first? Linda.
Linda Keeling. I've sent to you this, but I had three pages. Sorry, I should have gotten that in the mail, email. So overall, the budget seems to sound and holds under the 2% increases allowed, which is good. However, I'm very disturbed with the salary for the supervisor, which was increased 79% to over $60,000. This is outrageous, as former supervisors receive in the $30,000 range for this part-time job, which has a part-time secretary and the competency of the bookkeeper. Painting the streets of Tivoli for celebrations should be considered voluntary and not included in his salary's description. The councilman's salaries are within a 3% increase suggestion, yet the supervisor is six times their individual salaries. This must change. The supervisor's position has always been considered a part-time position. It must remain this way. Then I went through each page. Page one, I have questions and comments. Is the grant administrator of $10,476 for a separate independent vendor or in-house services? B. What does the supervisor's general for $5,000 cover? C. Town clerk general, $6,000 up from almost $4,000, which is a large increase. What does this cover? D. Attorney general, $48,000 plus attorney other legal, $10,000. Does this use the same attorney, or are other attorneys used? Page two. Website updates. In 2022, the actual was $1,702, an increase of $5,000, which seems a lot. B. St. Margaret's manager, now $5,304, which was previously zero. Who is this person? Do they have the necessary background for dealing with national historic structures restoration? C. St. Margaret's grams and bid for $14,239. What was this expensive, and what is the $5,837 for? St. Margaret's was $17,000, now proposed $5,000. What is this item for? Note, there seems to be expenses for St. Margaret's that the public has not been informed about over the last eight years. E. Contingent account for $10,000, which was previously over $21,000. What types of expenses are covered? Five. Page three. Rec. Park director for $39,439. Is this the same person managing the St. Margaret's home for $5,837? B. Cemetery groundskeeper, keepers for $21,218. How many groundkeepers does this involve? Are these persons separate from the Rec. Park employees? C. Cemetery manager for $3,514. Is this person different from the St. Margaret's manager position? Page four. Please to find the bonds for the following to include when they are completed. Please to find the bonds for the following to include when they are completed. Uh, REC PDR, I don't know what that's for, $34,194. Garage, $18,650. Campus improvements, $4,226. Tennis courts, $4,981. Rec Park annex, whatever that is, $30,323. What is this?
Bless you.
Uh, REC PDR, don't know what that means. $1,500, excuse me, $105,000. What is this for? Campus improvements, $14,714. Tennis courts, $16,000. Rec Park annex, again, $105,572. Revenues, affordable housing, $5,683. Is this a recurring amount and who is it from? Uh, B, general services, other governments, $55,000. What is this for and why has it increased from $21,000, $25,000 in 2022? C, Verizon Wireless, $31,625. Sprint Nextel, $35,225. AT&amp;T Singular, $41,000. How are these figured? Appropriations, page seven. Monitoring, $5,000. What is this? The STR, monitoring.
Look, Linda, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's been more than three minutes. You have a very extensive list and I, I, I do realize you emailed it to us just before the, the meeting. Uh, all I can say to you is that we'll, we'll try to get your answers as soon as possible.
Somebody wanna give me their time for a minute?
Linda, it doesn't work that way. Thank you. Would somebody else like to?
Other places you can do that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, would, would anybody else like to speak then?
Ben, would you like to?
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, Mary. Yeah. Anybody else like to? Laurie, would you like to?
Sure.
Sure.
Um, my name's Laurie Husted, volunteer for a couple of your committees. Um, and I just wanna say that as a volunteer, I see a small fraction of all that goes on and learning today and then through your mailings, et cetera, how much you all have accomplished. Such financial responsibility has blown me away. I mean, what's going on over there and that amount of work that that person's managing as well. Um, I don't know, it's sort of the nickel and diming, you know, you know, putting together a full-time salary for him is amazing. Um, and I'm pretty sure that's a full-time salary for the person at the helm of this all. So that makes sense to me as a number. Um, I don't have any other particular things. I was just trying to write, yeah, uh, keeping it all on budget and, um, the phenomenal amount of work that's happening. Also those website updates, because we all know what a, what a pain in the neck that is. And, uh, that's really appreciated, that hard work that's happening over there. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Would anybody else like to speak?
Somebody wanna speak and replay what's been?
Anybody like to speak? Okay. Very good. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, why don't we just, um, and if you would, let's go to the summary pages. Does, we do have copies here, folks.
Here's the.
Uh, the, uh, if you have not seen it online, of the budget.
So summary page three?
So yes, if we can go, um, and then I apologize, it's hard for me to see, so it must be hard for some of them to see. I think we really need to blow it up a little bit more.
Is that better? Do you want me to blow it even more?
No, it's not so much that, it's, I think it's.
Do you want to talk to the paper?
Yeah, no, I have that. I have that. Thank you, though. Uh, I just wanna make sure it's physical for everyone. Okay, so we're at the summary page. Um, it, it essentially shows you the difference in the years. Um, both revenues and appropriations. And you can see, I think somebody mentioned staying under the cap. We have not had to raise taxes at all, um, over these years. So we're, we're well within the cap. And just so you know how that program works is, um, you do get to, if, if God forbid, you need to, um, raise more than a cap in one year. You, whatever you have banked, you can add another one and a half percent to that. Um, we don't intend on needing that necessarily, but that's the way the legislation works. Um, okay, next, next page if you would.
You wanna go back to the tax rate?
Sorry, tax rate, yeah.
Okay.
And there again, you can see that we have, um, basically, uh, kept, um, expenses flat moving forward. Yeah, I think that's good. The next slide.
All right, so next slide was where we're at.
Yeah.
And then we go to the town tax rate page.
Tax rate per thousand.
Right. And tax rate per thousand, this is two page.
Yeah, and I think.
And then we do this, the town's assessed at, the average price was $395.
Sure, sure, sure. I'm gonna now look at my own copy because I still can't read it from here. It's so blind. I think it's just the rest.
I think it's brightness, yeah.
Yeah, the brightness is not, is not working. I, I think somebody will check on this, but I think you may have the lowest tax rate, one of the lowest tax rates in the town. Here in the town, but.
So this is page 20, Robert?
Yeah. So just to quantify it for folks at home, if you live in the village, the portion of your taxes, if you have what the county is, uh, median, $395 house with star, you're paying $255 a year in taxes. If you are in the town, you are also paying another $298. Your total tax bill, if you are in a $395,000 assessed house and getting basic star, you're paying $552 a year in town taxes. We hope that you agree that it's a, it's great value when you look at all the things that the town does, whether it's all the recreation parks, the summer rec programs, all the maintenance on the roadways. All of that is included in that $552, uh, amount if that's what your house business has for. So that's sort of the basics. Um, next, next slide.
That's the, uh, tax cap, that's the calculation of how we're under the tax cap?
And I think that's, that's pretty much it. Um, the tax rate declines by 13.16% um, to slightly, uh, more than offset the 13% increase in the assessments. And that continues, I think, over the years. It's something like the tax rate has declined by 38% while residential properties have trended up by 30%, which means that folks are actually spending less in taxes, um, now than they were back in 2015 on a, on an annual basis. Um, obviously, if you've joined one of our programs, um, if you're in the community solar, I think we calculated last year, folks were saving over $800 a year just by being in that one program. So $550 in your town taxes, join a town program, that's saving you quite a bit of money. Um, we think it presents really great value. Anything else? Um, first of all, we have to thank all of our employees, all of them, for the great work. Countless volunteers. This doesn't get done without the passion of so many folks in this community. It's why we work so hard, um, to achieve these types of results is because it feeds upon itself and people are more inclined to volunteer when they see that we are able to accomplish. I think there's something like 75 projects on that list. Um, they wanna be involved, uh, and create these kind of results. So we really have to thank hundreds of volunteers in our community who do everything from help us with some of the things we do to coach a soccer game, for example. So thank you all at home, thank you all here, um, for your efforts, um, in all our endeavors. Anything else? No? Okay, and Anne goes through a very, um, official process where you go check to make sure that we're under the tax cap.
And I did that before the.
Okay.
Meeting and we are under the tax officially.
Very good. Um, thank you. And at this time, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the, uh, fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget as the adopted budget. Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Julia?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you all, uh, for attending tonight's public hearing. At this time, we're gonna switch over.
Can I just say quickly, I wanna thank you to you, but also thank you to Anne for all of the work that goes into putting this all together. Not least of which is making the technology work.
I don't know what we would do without Anne around here.
I'm excused.
Well, never.
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. All right, I think, um, we might have to just work on that, so.
Right, so I'm gonna, is that how you want that?
No, not so much. No, 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 so they can see.
Okay.
Be great. But it's on four.
It's on four. I moved it because three wasn't working for me. So I moved it to four, but you should still be able to go to four because you're plugged in.
Something.
Oh, no, you're still, it's still on four.
It's not happening.
Yeah. Doesn't like apple. Yeah.
You think that's what it?
Turn the TV off, turn that on. Yeah, off. Turn that on. Give it a second to warm up. As simple as.
Technology's great until it doesn't work.
Until it doesn't work.
Whereas I like to say, just because you have the smartest, doesn't mean I'm smart.
Okay, give it a second.
Right.
Okay, folks, so, uh, just very quickly on announcements. First of all, we want to commend, as does Duchess Alliance, thank Duchess Alliance for Business. The Business Excellence Award goes to In Flight. Um, they have empowered people with intellectual and development disabilities in the Hudson Valley region through programs that teach independent living and employment skills. Um, you probably have seen their sign. The business is located here in the village of Red Hook. And so we honor them for that. Um, each year, we wanna remind you of, once again, there will be a Veteran Day memorial service, this time at 11 o'clock on 11/11 at Memorial Park. Uh, barbecue pork loin coming up at Hendrick Hudson Lodge on Third Street, the nuisance. Uh, November 4th, 3 to 6, all takeout. We have our public hearing, we've already endeavored. Let's jump right on in. Does anybody else have any announcements before we get into our agenda items? Okay, um, we also, uh, work with Duchess County to do some types of procurement shared services. Um, we have an annual agreement that we, um, are going to extend into 2024. It's an IMA regarding assistance from the county with central purchasing services. And it's done at an hourly rate. I don't know if we used it in 2023, but we did use it in 2022, I think. Um, any questions, folks? I think that's, uh, the same hourly rate and that's the extension. Board members, we're ready to entertain. Resolution, DNI, apologize.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, thank you very much. Resolution number eighty-three. Is there a second? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, I am on my agenda. St. Margaret's, um, we had bids for plumbing. Um, we are making, uh, the bathroom there ADA accessible. And, um, Ackerman Mechanical was the winning bid recommended. And I don't, I don't see our resolution as the. There we go. Um, our resolution number eighty-four, authorizing the award of bid for, um, plumbing, St. Margaret's. For the folks at home, we do public bids. Anytime the, uh, anticipated cost of the project is $35,000 or more, they are sealed bids. And ISO move, resolution eighty-four, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, we have already approved fiscal year 2024 budget. Please don't look at the screen, you may get dizzy. Um, a change order for proofbud connector project. Uh, we originally thought we would need a 16-foot gate. We weren't gonna do the gate. Turns out we need a 20-foot gate. And so that's what the change order is for. Um, this is a project, by the way, that we also have grant funding for. Any questions, town board members, before we take up resolution number eighty-five, authorizing a change order? And this is for the north parking lot, the gate there.
I, I mean, just to clarify, because you just said there was a 16-foot gate and we're gonna do that. Now we're doing a 20-foot gate. Really because we had to move it.
Exactly.
Right, so the 16-foot, the reason we're not doing the 16-foot is because when we started the engineering, we had to move it and to get it out of the, um, traffic flow.
The traffic.
I can't think of the right word for that, but so.
Drive aisle.
Yeah, the drive aisle. So that made it have to be a 20-foot gate. So just to clarify, it's not that we didn't wanna do a gate and now we're doing a gate. We have to do a different sized gate.
Gate, yep. Okay. Who would like to move eighty-five? Did I move eighty-five?
Some moved.
Some moved. Thank you, Jessica.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Um, we are now moving towards, uh, building department reports and committee reports.
It's not here, do you want to report?
I know, while we get from the night out, hope you're staying better. Um, who would like to do building? Julia?
Uh.
Would you like to do building?
Sure, and I reviewed it. Um, so there, I mean, there's always a lot of information from the Philly Department. They, uh, had total revenue this month of, it's still a little bit, $2,000. And I actually had a question. If you go, like, if you make people dizzy again and go down through the individual pages here to get to the pie chart?
Yeah, the pie chart.
A lot of this had to do with a commercial project or multiple commercial projects. And I was gonna ask Bill a question about that. I don't know, um, what that was.
I hope I can answer it for you. So it's a very large number of building department workers because Bard College, um, is paying a very large fee for dorms.
For the dorms, okay, that's what I was guessing.
That's why it's many times over what it normally is for this, for a monthly period. So would you like to get dizzy again and go back to signing, Kay? There we go.
So during the month of, whatever you're looking at, September, October?
We are, yeah, the period is October.
October. Uh, 42 permits were issued. The building department completed 71 inspections, issued 34 certificates of occupancy or statements of completion, handled six complaints and had total revenue began primarily through that. handled six complaints and had total revenue began primarily through that Bard College permitting of eighty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Very much, Julia.
Dizzy as hell.
Keeping, keeping the folks at home dizzy, watching the screen. Next up, we have. There's the pie chart that you were referring to. We didn't spend any money or get, receive any money related to hot tubs or spa. Police, who would like to do police? Jacob?
Sure. So for the month of September two thousand and three, a report from the police department included one hundred and twenty-nine incidents, including one hundred and twenty-nine in a town, thirty-five that were killed. There were twenty-one traffic tickets and one arrest.
Full report. Of those incidents. Rec, Recreation Director's Report. It's been a, a, a bit of a sensitive thing, John Kim. It's caused a little bit of friction here on the board because we've asked Christine to try to summarize all the work that you all do in a matter of minutes and it's impossible to do so. So you can get to, to watch that happen now, tonight. Christine?
Okay. She talks really fast. I do usually try to talk really fast. But out of respect for John being here tonight, I'll think I'll try and go a little slower. So in the earlier presentation we had this evening, we did touch on quite a few projects and changes that have happened in the rec department. So one thing is that there is constant mowing that has to be done now on Rec Park East and West. Now the report I'm doing is through October ninth. So we haven't quite gotten to the, like, close down the parks for the season. There's a lot more work coming there, we know. But as we mentioned in almost every report, all of our facilities are seeing increased use at, in all age groups. And we have, we've been working really hard to upgrade the facility so that we can accommodate more use, more light, so things can even go later if necessary. So that is the mowing and the grooming of the fields is a continuous need. The baseball fields, both sides, these park west parts, have been getting upgrades on storage sheds. The pitching, what do you call that?
Bullpen.
Bullpen, yeah, sort of thing.
Batting cage.
Yeah, batting cage, right, has been added. We're scheduling, we're just getting, as I said, increased demand for particularly the turf field. And games are given priority over practice in that. On the pickleball courts, that there were some pictures of earlier, we play continues to increase and groups play every morning and even evening. And John has noted that the courts are often full when he arrives at the parks at eight AM in the morning. So that is how much use we are seeing in the fast-growing game of pickleball or interest in the game of pickleball. As reported last time, we did get our fifteen thousand dollar grant from the county towards our rec programs. Excuse me. And we have, are about ready to purchase and install our second memorial bench in Rec Park East to, in memory of Jack Gilfeather, longtime former supervisor of the town. And so that we expect that to be going in, in the not-too-distant future. We still do have a skate park section at the park. And as many people know, that can be quite noisy when being used on a continuing basis. So, and also pickleball, the constant flap of the balls can be quite noisy on a regular, all-the-time basis. So we have now submitted a purchase order for acoustic fence panels to help mitigate that noise from those two uses. We talked about the electrifying New York grants. And so the Rec Park isn't, staff is now using almost, not all, but almost a lot of electric, electric equipment now that was purchased through that grant and is included in the budget. This year is a request for a purchase of an electric gator to replace the gas gator from two thousand and four that grooms the ball fields every day. As I mentioned, that is just an ongoing need. Unfortunately, as Robert mentioned earlier, we have been having a continuing problem with vandalism at the park. And we recently had two very serious acts of vandalism in the men's room of the redone restrooms. And the first incident cost two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars to repair. And unfortunately, even after that, it did not, you know, our nice, brand-new men's room did not look nice and brand-new. I mean, it was repaired, but you could tell that it had been repaired. And shortly after it had been repaired, we had a second incident in the men's bathroom again. Another thousands of dollars' worth of damage. And so it is, that of course is unfortunate, but as we mentioned, we do have security cameras there. So we have been able to, there's some information available about that. So an ongoing, an investigation is ongoing and hopefully things will be resolved soon, excuse me. For attendance, this is really, we're, we have to do attendance reports every year. So we are going to have that final information by the end of October. So I'm sure at our next month's report, we will have that. But I think that the draft report, just to give you an idea, is for the recreation playground that we mentioned earlier, that's free. We had a total of two hundred and fifty-four participants. And in the co-ed sports camp, we had a hundred and eighty-one participants. And in co-ed city games, we had a hundred and fifty-eight participants. In co-ed tennis instruction, we had sixty-nine participants. Girls' basketball one and two, twenty-seven. Girls' field hockey, fifty-nine. Girls' sports training and development, twenty-seven. Co-ed weight training and fitness, twelve. Summer community track meets, forty-four. The fishing contest, the annual co-ed fishing contest sponsored with the Red Hook Rod and Gun Club had a total of ninety-one attendees. The co-ed teen pool party was twelve. And the girls' lacrosse camp, we are still waiting for the final data. So all of that together shows what the rec department has been up to. And this is just the rec department, this is just direct rec services. And as was mentioned earlier, our rec department also maintains St. Margaret's, the dog park. Yes, the cemeteries and the two, the two main rec parks. And town hall.
And town hall.
So, you know, we really just cannot thank John and his team enough for the amazing amount of work that you guys do with very, very little complaints. So thank you all very much for that.
Thanks, Christine. Jacob, would you like to do tree preservation?
Of course. So for the October meeting of the Red Hook Tree Preservation Commission, meeting took place last week on the twenty-fourth. Lots of good information about the fall tree delivery, just scheduled for this Wednesday at seven-thirty AM. Trees are going to be delivered to the Red Hook Highway Department Building. A lot of details have been sorted out, including coordinating with Teresa. Michelle Decker with eleven planting holes on this Friday at ten AM. The highway department has been contacted, right-of-way distances have been confirmed. Property owner has been informed about the final details of the planting project. It's going to take place on the third and the fourth, so Friday and Saturday of this week. So a lot of good information there and that's going to be out on Bud's Corners Road. And then the committee has also applied for a basic membership to the American Chestnut Foundation and that's been submitted.
Thank you, Jacob.
All in sixteen minutes.
Quick.
That's the sweetest I've ever done.
Okay, I think that's all we have for committee and department reports before we entertain a motion to go into attorney-client session. Correspondents from Linda are related to C D P D grant and those comments are available for the public to view. Okay, very good. At this time, I would like to thank you all for joining us tonight. Stay healthy. As I'm sure you've heard from your friends and neighbors, there are lots of viruses circulating right now. So we want you all to stay warm, if possible, and healthy and we'll see you again soon. Thanks very much. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into attorney-client. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Goodnight, everyone, thank you.
Thank you all.